Good evening, everyone. If you join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Town of Rutland Select Board Meeting for July 23, 2019. Full board. Just great. Hope everyone's having a good July. Going too quick. We're going to look at some minutes here. One from June 25th. Present were Mary, Sharon, and Joe. One of you three were-
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion by Joe, seconded by Mary. For discussion. All those in favor? Any opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain. Two abstentions and three will pass it. There you are, Mary. And then the July 9th meeting, myself, Mary, and John Paul were present.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion by John Paul, seconded by Mary. For discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I'll abstain.
Stand.
Two abstentions. Three will pass.
You get the final message, Sharon?
Nope, sorry.
You have the orders, Mary, right?
Mm-hmm.
Alright.
What's that? Do you want to say anything else?
Okay, any questions from the floor? Public comment? Anyone who's not on the agenda who wishes to speak? But do you mind, Howard, if I go to the folks behind you first? Folks from Wingcrest Road are back.
Yup.
Come on, come on up. Was it two weeks ago you folks are here or a month ago?
Uh, two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago, alright. Welcome back.
Thank you. We were here two weeks ago discussing the easement right-of-way that the town had to the old well that was there. The well has collapsed.
Okay.
And Byron came up and we walked it and found some of the pins, didn't find some of the pins, and we're waiting to see if you guys have made any decisions on what you're going to do.
So, uh, we haven't even talked about Byron's visit yet, so this is certainly premature for us to-
Well, yeah, I said, I wasn't sure, so I just-
Yeah. Byron would, um, do you care to speak on this for a moment? I'd assume you were going to talk about it in your report, but-
Yeah, at some point.
Come up, come up now if you'd like. We'd like to hear about it.
Yeah, as you asked, I went down a couple days after the Stuckboard meeting and, you know, I met with the we walked around, I did a little bit of research, land records and send it to you, uh, Mrs. Myers.
Yup.
She deeded that property over. She established a 50-foot right-of-way to that well house, which was part of Fire District Number Two.
Hold your side just for the, because we didn't have a full board. We're talking about, uh, these folks own the second house on Wingcrest Road. Alderman Chevrolet just bought the first house on the property. There's a 50-foot right-of-way between that first house and the second house the town owns. And, uh, these folks came in concerned that, um, Alderman's is, you know, making it basically a car lot and, uh, they're, they're getting close or could get close to the right-of-way and so on. They're, they're wondering about their protections. And then they had some interest in purchasing our right-of-way and the, the board at the time did indicate that we're probably not in the market of selling the right-of-way. But anyways, thanks Byron, if you continue.
So anyways, in looking at, uh, pins and taking some measurements of knowing full well, uh, the surveyor, it seemed that the eastern side of that 50-foot right-of-way is ten feet of hope, um, off the corner of his garage.
Right.
And then heads off at an angle on the backside of his lot, I think 45 feet wide. Um, I don't really see any usefulness to the town for that. I think established as a right-of-way to that well lot and well house that was there that served those houses. At the time the mall was constructed, I remember in that, uh, there was a bunch of blasting going on there and disturbed the well. And at that time, they extended city water-
Right, up to it, yup.
To those houses. But I don't really see any usefulness there. There's such a drop-off on the other side. You're not going to use it to build a road to-
Nowhere.
To nowhere.
You're going to end up, I mean, the construction feasibility there is just out of this world. And what purpose it serves, I don't know.
Is, is Alderman's planning on leveling the house? Are they keeping the house?
I heard they're going to bulldoze the house and turn it into a parking lot, but that's just hearsay.
And they put in a gravel-
Temporary driveway, which is-
Is that in our right-of-way, Byron?
Some of it is, yes.
Yes.
Small portion, you know. Five, six feet of it for shortways is probably in that right-of-way. And maybe that's why Phil probably wants to level that house because in order to have access to that, you probably are going to have to go through that house.
Right.
So, I don't know. There was a suggestion that, you know, that the land be split in half, 25 feet, sold to these people and 25 feet sold to Alderman's. It's whatever this board feels. My recommendation is there's no usefulness. You have to put it back on your grant list.
Do we have to sell it?
We don't have to sell it.
Can we just deed it to them?
Oh.
I mean, did we pay for it originally? Or do we don't?
Are there any deed restrictions? Is it a right-of-way or is it fee simple on the land?
According to our property maps and, and I did not actually find a deed to it.
Huh.
There's mention of turning that to the town. Property maps show that we own it.
But there's no deed. Okay, so we don't want to sell something we may not own.
Right, or give away something we don't own.
Can't give it away.
Huh?
You can't give it away.
Yeah?
No.
We got to go. We should probably, I'd like to see it myself and then we should probably see if we can find how the town acquired it if it did.
Right. From, from what we found in our paperwork, Mrs. Myers grant you guys the easement-
A right-of-way, yeah.
That 50-foot right-of-way.
Do you have a copy of what?
Not with us. I, I have it at home.
Yeah, if you could, like, scan it and send it to Bill or drop off a copy over here.
Okay, I could drop a copy off.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thanks. And then maybe we can get up there and take a look.
Like I said, you know, for years, it's just, we've been maintaining it for the last 17 years just because I don't want to go back to Woods. You know, and there's always been the water problem there, which I'm sure some of yous remember, you know, Mr. Myers coming down here complaining about the water and going across the road and, you know, like I said, I, right now, my property line is like 10 feet from my pin. I can't add on to my garage because whoever owns the right-of-way. You know, and I'd like to add on and that way you guys get more tax revenue. If at all possible.
So it sounds like, uh, Mary has indicated that we should take a, take a quick peek at it, so we'll set up a site visit for the board or whoever else wants to come down and look at our right-of-way.
Right.
So we can get a better idea of it. Sounds like you're going to drop off some paperwork.
Yeah, I can make a copy of it and bring it down tomorrow.
Yeah, and we'll see if we can get down there in the next two weeks and take a peek. If not, we'll do it in the next month or so.
Okay.
Alright?
Yup. Thank you very much.
See you guys coming back in, alright? Not a problem. Thanks.
Are, is, um, Alderman's, I have assumed and are aware of this 50-foot right-of-way.
You could, you would assume, but-
But I think that we should notify them that there is this 50 feet between the properties and, to Byron's point, they've already kind of encroached on that 50 feet with part of their, not a lot, but-
There's been some surveyors down there. It goes along that wall, proximate area where there should be a pin or something. The weeds have all been knocked down.
Somebody's looking.
Somebody's been looking for-
Okay.
Evidence of-
It wouldn't be, Bill, it wouldn't be a bad idea for you to send a nice letter to Alderman's and just let them know that we understand they've acquired the property and there is a 50-foot right-of-way between their property and the neighbors that we own.
What, can we tie it into, we're going to do a site visit and we'd be glad to meet with the adjoining landowners there? Yeah.
We'll just have to pick a date.
Yeah, we will.
And we should do that before we leave here.
Yes.
And if we're going to have Alderman at the site visit, I think we should-
Well, make sure these folks are there.
Make sure these folks get a letter too.
Yeah, no, I agree. Yeah.
I just worry they'll go in and put a road, you know, put some money into something and find out it's on somebody else's property and then we're-
So when's the board want to do it?
Well, Tuesdays are seeming to be a pretty-
It's Tuesday, we have that, uh, that BCA meeting next Tuesday.
I know we do.
30th. What time is that? At 6 o'clock, is it?
6 o'clock, BCA meeting.
Do we do this, do this before? Crowd us, crowd you, crowd me? It's a rainy day, it won't be hant, so.
Well, that's true.
I don't know.
It's, um, 5-ish?
What day?
30th.
Tuesday, the 30th?
At 5-ish.
5 o'clock, Tuesday the 30th?
I have a 4 o'clock appointment, so I may be a little late.
You going to be able to determine whether we own it by then? We can see where you-
See what they drop off, yeah.
That's it, right?
Quick title search, we might know something.
So that gives us an hour to go look at 50 feet by whatever and at least have an idea what we're looking at.
Yeah.
I didn't want to rush the conversations, that's all.
Yeah.
What?
I didn't want to rush any conversations here.
So, on the 30th, at what time?
5 o'clock.
5 o'clock, uh, Wingcrest Road, no, sorry. And the well is defunct, right? So that's, to what it went to, it's gone. So we don't have to worry about that anymore.
Whose well was it?
I don't know.
Uh, it was part of, what'd you say? I think Byron said Fire District Two.
And is that defunct or not?
Yeah, because they're part of the city water. They're on, they're on the main now, because-
Well, let's see if I can take a look at-
You said the well is no longer used.
5:00 PM, Billy.
Yeah, yeah, they're all on city-
But somebody had to have owned that land.
Yeah, so the, yeah, so there's no reason for the-
So one of the houses, maybe?
They might have water rights to it, which may or may not be there, but the rights might still be there.
Right.
So it might be a little more involved. Let's see what I can find out.
We'll see what we see.
Yeah, I can't see how we can sell something we don't know we own.
Yeah.
Happens every day.
Well-
People do it all the time.
Well, that's good, but this people ain't.
That's what keeps Mary and Josh and Ardon and other people-
I'm, I'm retired.
Yeah.
Yes.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Let's see what they come up with. Let's see what the easement, that should give us- Well, okay, then.
Copies of their deeds.
Alright.
For their property. I did look at the other ones on each side to see if there were any water rights or anything there.
Yeah, I don't want to make it a bigger deal, but still, I mean, you know, you're talking about a well and you're talking about a right-of-way, so let's see what's there. I'll, I'll take a look, you know, and if you bring down the stuff you have.
I mean, I can take a look at it a little more later next week.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Byron.
We were talking the 30th?
Talking 5:00 PM on-
30th.
July 30th, next Tuesday, Wingcrest Road Site Visit. Bill, you warned that for us? Thank you. Okay, Howard Burgess, we have you on the agenda, Howard, under New Business. Letter B, Board to Meet with Lister, Howard Burgess to discuss grant list errors and omissions. Is that what you wanted to talk about?
Yes, yup. There's four parcels on the grant list that need to be adjusted and we'd like to do it before the tax bills get printed next week.
Right.
We need your approval to do that. Just quickly go through them. These are small accounts. One is from, as well as a tabletop media, it's business personal property. Grant list value of $108.40. This was some equipment that was in Friendly's Restaurant. It was leased and it's, it's gone now. Garvey's Nissan, uh, they were touch and go with whether they were going to be in place and time and, and, and they weren't. Their grant list, they moved to Clarendon, as you all know, Garvey's Nissan. This is business personal property again. They had a grant list value of $988.30 and we'd like that just removed from the, from the grant list. Arthur Segren from Coal River Road, it was a mobile home that was down on Hubbard's Land. It's been demolished and done away with. That was in for $15 on the grant list and to let that go. And one other one, an adjustment for a swimming pool for Francis Ojola from 519 Sugarwood Hill. Last September, they removed the pool. Uh, they intended to tell us that it was gone and anyways, now that we know that it's no longer there, we'd like to just take the swimming pool, swimming pool is in for an assessment of $7,000 on the grant list. We'd like to make that adjustment.
Is that personal property?
That's real estate.
That was real estate. The other three are personal?
The other three are personal, yup, yup.
And they all happened before April 1st of this year?
Yes.
Okay. The move we, I move, we remove, or vote, whatever, to allow the listers to remove those four items of property from the grant list.
Motion by Mary, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Sharon. Motion to remove from the grant list $7,000, $15, $108.40, and $988.30. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Alright, Howard.
That's it, just one last thing. Army Reserve, we talked a couple of weeks or so ago about it. I hope, don't let it go that we, we take the opportunity to try to get something going. I think-
Yeah, Mike and I talked real briefly about it and have you connected with Mike on that?
Just briefly.
Okay, yeah, so I think we just need to set up a time for your contact to take a peek at Dewey and with Mike and you, you guys can coordinate that.
Whatever's going to be sure.
That good?
Yup, yup.
Alright.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Okay, we'll go right to Bill Sweet, Town Administrative Assistant to the Select Board. Well, you've well rested from that big vacation, Bill?
Yes, I am.
Alright.
Thank you. I won't grade you on the packet. I'll let, I'll let them do that, don't worry.
That was a solid B, believe me.
Uh, well, um, the packet's mostly yours. I don't know if there's anything specifically you wanted to go through?
We're going to get to it in good time.
Okay. Uh, I, I put on your desks, uh, there was one item from, from JP there, one item from Chief Dumas there, and then there is a proposal from Johnson Energy that we just got in the mail yesterday uh, for, um, heating oil for the heating season. You have the original, Josh, there, the original agreement.
So, uh, Johnson Energy's been a, a great preferred vendor for us for many years now. Uh, they are proposing once again the number two fuel, oil, um, at, from August 1st, 19 to June 30th of 2020.
Actually, 20,202, so-
I just corrected that.
Do we have no contract for July?
August, June.
First to June 30th. We missed July there. So I don't know how, I don't know if that's a misprint or what, but this is, that's an 11-month contract.
We're right on here. How about July?
Yeah. Because I think that's a pretty-
But maybe he fills them in, I don't know, maybe he fills them in June and thinks we're going to be fine, I don't know. Anyways, uh, 35 cents per gallon over Johnson Energy cost on the day of delivery with a max cap rate of 2.599 for the contract period. How would the board like to move?
Do we have the, we don't have the numbers from last year? That seems very-
Seems very, very generous.
Well, yeah, it's less than you and I are paying for-
Correct.
I was going to say, yeah.
Yeah.
I was-
If I could buy it for this, I'd say yes.
Couple of months ago that I filled up, so what is?
We paid $270 something, just about a week ago to firm.
Yup.
So I mean, that's a good price and they are a capped price, which last year was the difference between everybody is they're willing to put a lid on it at 260 regardless of price, which is pretty fair.
So I move that we accept their bid?
Second.
Motion by Sharon, seconded by Mary to accept, uh, Johnson Energy's proposal for the next, uh, contract year. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Abstain.
One abstention.
And we'll get the dates cleared up?
Asses by four, absolutely.
Okay.
Probably okay, since we're at the 23rd.
Well, I think it, I think it's a misprint myself, but-
Potentialized shot, then.
Alright. What else you got for us, Bill?
Uh, that was all the additional I had beyond what you had in the packet, so.
Okay.
It's just a good time to talk about that agreement that I put in. So, right now, it's the policy of the town and there is a document somewhere from, I'm going to say maybe 14 or 15 years ago. The town, um, agrees to defend and indemnify certain first responders, the constables and the fire chief and officers because town gets the benefit of the use of their personal vehicles. Well, a recent case, the, there's an insurance company challenging the returning of an event. They're saying that, okay, yeah, you've got coverage under the town policy going to the event, but you don't have that coverage returning from the event, which is just stupid. But there's a way around it. If we have a contract in place that says the coverage is in effect both responding and returning, we close that loophole for our people. And so I drafted this up for the board's consideration. It tracks what is already, what we already do, but it just reduces it to writing and includes returning from the event as part of that defense and indemnity.
One question, JP. This specifically says the constables, fire department, officers. What about the firefighters themselves?
We typically won't, um, firefighters are required to go to the station. Our officers can respond directly to the scene and that's the distinction.
That's the distinction, okay. So, so a firefighter leaving from their home going to the station is covered?
They'll be covered as long as they're properly permitted and they have the appropriate light and siren, yes.
Right, or if they don't, then they have to-
But they're only going to be covered going to the station.
Okay.
Not when they-
We're never going to get covered for them because-
You don't know where they're going.
Well, also, the station is considered their place of work.
Right.
And they never cover you for going back to your place of work.
Where I see this is like when our guys go to a mutual aid call, especially the office, some officers will go directly to the scene to size it up, give them a heads up to the guys coming in. Now they'll be covered coming home from that.
Correct.
Okay. You guys good with it?
We, we just need a motion.
I make, go ahead.
Go ahead, Phil.
I make the motion, we accept the defense of indemnity, indemni-
This-
That agreement.
Motion by Sharon, is there a second?
I'll second.
By Joe. For discussion?
Question.
Yes, Mary.
Uh, police officers, are they always assumed to be taking their own, the, the cruisers that we provide?
They can enforce in their personal vehicles. They're in ARC vehicles and so there's no issue.
Okay.
Any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
We just need to authorize Josh to sign on behalf of the town. I think we have everybody else here to sign.
Pass that to John for me, Mary.
I'd move that, that we authorize Josh as chairman to sign this document.
Second.
Motion by Joe, seconded by Sharon. For discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. This trailer quote, that's for Byron? Trailer quote, Byron? Okay, I got four on my desk, so. Okay, so let's take a peek at the packet. Uh, number one was the bridges and roads standards. We're going to save that for Byron. Number two is Mike's five-year rec plan and what's been completed. We'll save that for Mike. Number three is the stormwater ordinance. What do we need to do now on that, Bill?
You, we, you, you made the amendments to it, so that, that has all, that has the amended date on top of it, right? There should be-
Says an amended date of July 9th, 2019.
Okay, so that's-
Information only.
Uh, well, that is the draft that now has all of the changes incorporated into it. So, the original one was signed. I didn't know if you wanted to have the, what, what's going to take effect. Yeah, that's the updated and revised one after all the changes.
We probably should sign this one too.
Yeah, so I move that we adopt the, what was the date on it?
Uh, July 9th.
July 9th.
amended version.
2019 version of the stormwater ordinance.
Second.
Motion by Mary, seconded by Sharon. For discussion?
There's no place for Sharon or-
Mary's on the, Mary's-
Mary's got her own page, I'll wear it self.
You betcha.
There you go. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
While you're doing that, uh, number nine is the, uh, local hazard mitigation plan. And JP, you asked for the copy to be included. That had all, uh, the first, the cover page here is the comments and the changes that were made and then the, the draft behind that is all of that, is all integrated into it.
Okay. Action needed, Bill, on this?
Nope.
Information only?
That's the updated.
That's the, that's the updated one, yeah. Uh, that's why Stephanie said, you know, the changes were, like, it's pretty straightforward. They weren't, weren't really anything that was going to be too drastic, so it's been updated and sent along.
Yeah, I got my special page.
Yeah, you got your own page.
Number one, we're waiting for Byron. Two, Mike Rowe. Three is done. Four is for Kirsten. Five was just a notice of the, um, fire station committee meeting, our first meeting tonight to discuss the replacement in McKinley Avenue. Chris can talk a little bit about that when he comes up. Five's done. Six, we'll wait for Kirsten. Number seven is a notice of a BCA meeting that's next, um, Tuesday, July 30th here at 6:00 PM. Last week's meeting was about a two-hour meeting. A lot of stuff got discussed and handled. Um, and this one will be to discuss the pocket property again and discuss how to handle, um, tax bills, you know, outpost, post the stamps and so on, so be a good one to attend if you're available. There you go, Joe.
I think they signed it already.
Did you sign it already?
Yeah, it's all done.
Well, there. Number eight was a little comic relief from Josh. You enjoy that one, Mary?
I didn't see it.
Neither did I.
Oh, I don't know. I guess I put extras in other people's packets.
You know. We need a different fundraiser soon with different players.
I can, I can do some Photoshop with that if you like.
So the packet's one perfect. Okay, so that's pretty much it. On your desk, you have the police report that Chief Dumas can go over. Let's go to Barbara Noise-Pulling.
Thanks, Bill.
Hey, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
We share the planning commission. Now, give one to me, the two chiefs, and keep the original.
I thought you were handing them that.
Hi, how are you?
Uh, so on the 11th of Ju- of July, we had a public meeting for the stormwater ordinance. Thanks, Mary.
You're welcome.
Helping out Andres. Teresa was there to, had a lot of questions, um, for him. And, I don't know, my big takeaway was that we still need to do more outreach. We still need to reach out to people in that area and let them know, you know, there is a new ordinance in town and-
But also that they can still do some of the things they want to do, but they have to get a permit first. So, I mean, that was the second part of what I took away.
Yeah. And it doesn't, doesn't outright prohibit.
Right.
So. So we'll, uh, we'll go back to the planning commission and see what ideas we can come up with. I mean, one that has been floated is like, maybe we should, the planning commission, Stormwater Commission should go door to door. Um, there's about 40 properties, but we'll, we'll see what other ideas might come forth. We haven't had a chance to look at the new design, uh, the latest design for the Pocket Park. We haven't had time to really take a good look at that, so we'll, we'll be doing that. And, um, then I had a meeting with Jim Hall a couple days ago um, about his, his ideas and his suggestions for the energy plan as well as the town plan. It wasn't the planning commission's intention to open up the whole town plan. It's, it's not necessary. We can just add this energy section. But he, there are some things in there he thinks should be updated regarding transportation and railroads and a few other things. So, I'll leave that in your capable hands. Uh, I mean, this is going to happen with town plans, especially when they go eight years between town plans. And one of the reasons why you have that cycle is to go in and update things, but- He also had some suggestions about, uh, decommissioning. I think we've got it covered in those nine, 10 criteria. But if you want me to do a little more research on what the PUC, they are now taking a more serious look at decommissioning, requiring that. And there's nothing the town can do on top of that, um, but the town could ask questions. Jim was wondering if there should be performance bonds, um, to cover decommissioning, to cover the town's uh, possible expenses there.
It's after solar, or any energy-
Any of those renewables.
Yeah, because I know that when, um, Ecos came in, they said that they had to put money into a fund for the decommissioning on one of that size with estates, so-
Yeah.
There's already something, and you know, maybe these smaller ones, because that was one of the questions we asked the guys that we talked, those four companies we talked to.
Right.
The 500 KW units, if they had to and, I don't know, they seemed like they were all over the place for that.
And, and what we put in the draft energy plan is anything over 15 kilowatts shall include an action plan and guaranteed funding source for decommissioning. We can't, we can't require that. We can ask them to, to consider it. But that's, that's already in the energy plan, so I'm not quite sure we need to do much else, but if you want me to do some more research into that, be glad to.
We could get carried away with- We could get carried away with, if everybody came in and said this, you'll never get a, you'll never get a resolution to this. Because somebody else might come in next week and say, "Well, jeez, I read it and I think you should do this." I think that you have what you've done, we're there. Because if we keep, individuals keep coming in and we put a group together to put it together and this is what we got, it'll never, it'll never come to an end. Because everybody's got their own ideas, so.
So I too, out of respect for, for Jim, I met with him last week and I took, as you can see, these are my notes from our conversation. Jim made the suggestion that instead of adopting the energy plan, to put it on the March ballot, March of 2020 and allow the townspeople to vote on it if they feel the town should have what he feels is a pretty restrictive 32-page document, or if the town doesn't need one, or whatever. So that was a suggestion of Jim's.
I don't think we can do that. Aren't we required to have this?
No.
No.
No? The state doesn't say you have to have an energy-
If you wanna have a say in citing, you gotta have it.
Right.
I think the townspeople that have talked to me are, they overwhelmingly support us having a chair at the table.
Right.
And this is the only way we get it.
So, I think the, the other thing would be, we can adopt it and then if the townspeople want to vote on it, I think they can petition, get a petition up to put it on the ballot, but I'm not so sure we should just-
I think it's part of the reason, to JP's point, that was part of the reason for some of the changes and some of the stuff we put in there was to make sure you had a seat at the table.
Yes.
Whether you're for renewable energy or against it, we should have a say.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's, you know.
And we also added the other part about when we reach our maximum contribution.
We're still working on that, right, yeah.
So when would we be in a place, Barbara, for this document to be voted on by this board?
Well, whenever you're ready with those, those, those minor changes that you've been talking about, that Norm Cohen suggestion, that number 10 criteria. And you thought you might clarify some of the language around, we had 20 view sheds and then all of a sudden we have 16.
Yes, there was a little confusion.
Are they part of the energy plan or are they part of the town plan?
They are both, because they were originally in the town plan, so they're referred to there. But they're also in the energy plan. They're in both places.
And do we need one more public hearing once we have the final, final document?
Yes.
Okay, so I think what we should probably do is do a read-through to make sure we have a final document to take to public hearing and that there are no more changes. I'm looking over here because I suspect you're gonna be the one to do it. Okay. Yeah, I wouldn't mind working with you on this.
Can we, can we add, not to interrupt you, but can we add the few things we just talked about, the rule 10 and the other stuff?
Yes, we want to make sure 10 is on there.
And then Bill could get in our packets for two weeks? Or is that too soon? That's what I'm asking. We're not in any rush, it could be the, it could be August 20th. Could be September, doesn't, you know.
I don't want it to go too long. I'll try it, I'll try with it. How's your schedule in the next?
We're playing catch-up for a week.
Yeah, okay.
We'll take, take a little pressure off and we'll just have it for the 20th, Mary. It's four weeks.
So, well, we would have to have something.
You need 30 days to warn it.
To warn it, so.
Be into September to vote on it, or to have a hearing.
Yeah, we do have to have the hearing, the final, hopefully, hearing. Okay.
Okay, what?
That was pretty good.
Wasn't that good?
It'll be up to you to decide, all right? All right, cool.
All right, so you and I need to figure out a time I can come over and do that.
Barbara, what else you got for us?
And just one more comment from Jim Hall. I mean, we had a good conversation and this stems from him going as an individual with, with his suggestions, as opposed to the planning commission. But his, his other suggestion was that he wanted to make sure this plan addressed the affordability of the recommendations in it, which he has a very good point there. And I think that's something the energy committee can be working on. I mean, that can be one of its charges to, to make sure that, you know, all people get word of this and they're given the resources they need. And, the resources in the sense of, this is, you know, here's a list of places you can go to for whether it's nation or-
Oh, gotcha, okay. Took a minute.
Sort of thing, sorry.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Barbara.
Thank you.
First and halfway, Town Clerk and Treasurer.
Okay, what have you got for us?
Okay, so I only have really two things. The biggest one is the tax rate. I think, Josh put it in your packets again for this time around? I have a copy.
So, is everything in here?
Everything's in there. I have played with it a little bit. The town rate is down. We were able to, I increased what we were anticipating for the local options a little bit because we had a great year with that. And the school rate is up significantly, so this is kind of where we're at at this point. But it's not awful, it's more than we probably hope to increase the taxes by, but.
So, the first section are the appropriations. Then there's our bond payment for the fire station, which still comes out of the surplus.
Yes.
Okay. Then there are the general account, police account, but those have adjustments that are taken care of by the local option tax.
Correct.
Okay. And then the other, the others are the depreciation funds for fire, rec, highway, police. And then?
The local agreement is all of the exemptions for veterans and-
We still have a veteran's exemption? Wow. Is that state statute or is that a local?
I think that's state statute.
Okay.
Our local agreement hasn't changed. It's federal.
Is it federal? Okay.
Yeah, our, our local agreement hasn't changed the whole time that I've been here, so it's been holding pretty steady. But on the next page is the actual amounts that will be raised for each of the different rates that we have with the education rates and the highway, the rec and fire and all the depreciation funds. And down near the bottom you can see that the, the total tax rate changes that we're expecting would be a 2.91% increase for homestead and a 1.83% increase for non-residential.
And if you're ready to approve it tonight, we can entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded to set the tax rate and to approve the outline as Kirsten has given it to us. Any discussion, any questions? The stuff that we have forgotten in the past is all in here?
Yes, it's all in there. It's all in there.
I think the only problem we ever, we've run into in the last couple of years was the over anticipation of delinquent taxes and you've kind of got that under control.
We fixed that and then we did have that issue with the police depreciation fund.
Yeah, and that's all happy now.
Which is all fixed, yes.
Okay, all right.
Okay, looks good to me. As good as can be.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And all vote aye, opposed? Passes four to nothing.
Are you signing your copy, Mary?
Uh, aye, yes.
And then along with that, the tax bills are gonna be printed on the 31st. I have Nemrick coming in to help because of the changes. The law changed how the tax bills are gonna look, so I'm sure some people are gonna be confused. I am happy to try and assist whoever I can with any questions that they have. And we're gonna have the volunteers again here on the 7th of August stuffing all of the envelopes. So if anybody happens to have time, you're welcome to come join us at 9 o'clock on the 7th of August to get all the envelopes stuffed.
Because it's fun.
It's always fun.
What time, 9?
9 o'clock. On August 7th, it's a Wednesday.
We just set the tax rate, so you are no longer personally responsible.
I didn't have to vote to raise taxes?
Tax rate actually went down for the town, so you missed out on that.
I know it did.
Yeah.
Okay.
Back to you.
Good job by everyone on that.
Yeah.
You get the copy whether you sign it or not. It's in your trusting hands.
Thank you.
And then I think the only other thing that was on the list for me was the, the building RFP for the office.
Sorry, number eight still has not been changed.
What do you mean, number eight?
On number eight, we concluded that you could recommend the color and the carpet color, but that decision has to be made by the select board. It still is in it. That's okay, it's easy to get by. So that should just read paint color and carpet color to be recommended by the clerk to the select board.
Can we just write on a copy that you guys want to sign?
I'm changing it now.
Okay. He's, he's writing on one. And then I did leave a blank for the site visit dates and the proposal due dates, because, just because we've been, it's been a moving target, so I wanted to make sure that we were able to put in whatever needed to be put in.
I had talked to a couple of contractors and they liked the fall-winter construction type of project.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'll work.
What's the, what's the board's pleasure on this?
I'm pretty happy with this.
Yeah, I think it's ready to go.
Yeah, I think the only thing we need to do tonight is try to come up with the site visit date and the proposals would be due 30 days after that, right? So today is 23rd. Probably want to do a site visit like in the morning maybe with the contractors. Are you going to notify specific people and then plus put this out to bid?
Um, but probably.
Because usually, I think when, what, I'm trying to think, huh? When we advertise stuff like the fire trucks, we send out, say, a dozen packets to different vendors, put it in the paper and then gave, that was like a two-week time from the time it was in the paper. So if you put notice in the paper, which I'm assuming you're gonna do.
Right.
Well, Bill's gonna do it.
Bill's gonna do most of this, yeah.
It's gonna happen in the paper, then the site visit should probably be like 10 days after that.
Okay.
And, and if you want to notify specific contractors to make sure people are gonna show up because the Rottland Herald circulation and people seeing that is pretty, well, you know, we don't have the best advertising. You sometimes have to go door-to-door. So, but you can do that, you know, however you want to do it.
Question, I know there's no motion on the floor yet.
No.
Have you eliminated the sliders on the counter?
Not from the RFP, no.
So where is that? I, I see the one that's D, replace existing windows in the back office with the sliders.
That is number eight under the, that's at the very, very top of the next page.
Okay, well, as I've said many times, I oppose the framing and glass sliders. I, I don't like what it's going to do to the openness. And to that, if you then create an open entry to the office, if you take that single door out and create an open entryway, then you have to do something further in in order to secure the back part of the office, the office. So, I would oppose 6E and G and I would oppose 8.
Which one's Mary again?
The, the windows on top of the counter, it would be 8 on the back page, top of the back. If I'm looking at the correct version.
And what else?
Interior construction would be 6E, the open entry to the office, and the 6G, which is the door separating the entry point from the office. Because you've got to secure it somehow if you take, if you open up the space.
So 6G?
6E, 6G, and 8.
Yep.
I think the town clerk's office very badly needs an update. I'm fine with the rest of it. We've talked about this for a long time. In fact, I was one of the people who was moving to get it done for a long time. But I do disagree with the glass panels separating the town clerk from the people who come in to visit.
And I agree with you on that one.
So, that's where I am with it.
So at this point, do we vote on?
Somebody's gonna make a motion.
Somebody's gonna make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the RFP as presented.
Motion by Joe, is there a second? Is there a second? At this time, the motion fails for a lack of a second.
Okay, I will, I will move the RFP with the deletion of 6E, 6G, and 8. That removes the sliding counters and the new opening.
New, one more time, say those, Mary.
Sure, okay. Eliminate 6E, 6G, and 8.
Okay, motion is made by Mary, is there a second? Seconded by Sharon. For discussion.
Do we, do we have a date for the site visit or?
Not yet.
Okay. And the other, the numbers probably should be added, the proposals due date.
Number seven, under hallway, carefully remove three plaques in common area. We, I don't know, maybe, I haven't been on the building committee that long, so maybe the previous building committee can shed some light, but I feel like we've taken down some pretty nice memorabilia and we've never put them back up. So what's the, do we have a long-term plan if we take down those plaques and Mr. Del Bianco's picture and other things like that? We've taken down, where are we going with these things? Because they really need to be hung back up somewhere.
Which is fine. We were talking about different places that it could move to, not necessarily removing it from the building. The fire department plaque was gonna be moving to the Center Rottland Fire Station, as I understood it. So that's one of those three that's listed. The idea was that we put the plaques somewhere else so that maybe we could have some cases to put the trophies that we have for the kids or anything else in full view for people without blocking the plaques.
Well, then where are we moving those?
That hasn't been determined yet. I would like to keep them-
The town clerks, you know, I would say, fire department stuff to the fire station, town clerk stuff over to your side, select board and maybe other officials like we have up here on this side. I mean, it's just generally.
I was thinking of finding another place in the hall, not necessarily removing them completely from the hallway, but just a place that's not as, it's not obstructive. It's just that there's better uses of that space, that we could display more of the memorabilia from the town.
Well, I think Mr. Del Bianco put an awful lot of years into this stuff.
And I agree, completely.
I agree.
Those things need to remain here in the building.
Right, they need to, yeah. Whether it's this wall here and we honor them in this room or whatever, we just can't forget about them.
Right, absolutely.
Well, we'll be making the decision as to where they go anyway, so we won't forget about them.
Okay, any further discussion with the motion on the floor to eliminate 6E, 6G, and number 8 altogether? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to two with the elimination of those items.
So are we gonna have a building committee to figure out how we're going to rearrange the office since the counter was already-
The only thing you're doing is you're not getting the open door.
Right.
It'll stay the way it is and you just get a new counter with no glass.
Okay.
It'll be one with only-
The counter that we ordered is shorter, so we'll have to figure out a new.
Shorter than?
Than what we have.
It doesn't reach the wall.
We pulled it forward.
Yeah.
It, it creates some logistical issues, but we'll have to figure it out.
When is that stuff gonna be here?
Because we, we ordered that stuff with the idea that this is gonna pass as designed.
Right.
Okay, what are we doing about dates on this? About like 5:00 PM, Joey, before our 20th, August 20th select board meeting.
If you're gonna do a site visit, you gotta do it when contractors are more or less in their business day, work day, so you may want to do that. That'd be like a morning, I would think, for a site visit. For anybody that wants to come and see this, because most of those guys want to go home after a day's work, but.
Yeah, but if they want the business, when they come?
I mean, well, maybe yes, maybe no. You can-
It's a pretty nice little project for someone in the winter.
Yeah.
I don't care, I'm just, you know, for the board that wants to be here.
We just gotta pick, you know, if you do it, it's not something I would piggyback with anything else in case there's like questions. You don't want a time limit on this. That's the big thing about this kind of stuff, because you don't know what kind of questions you're gonna get, you know. Half a dozen contractors show up, there might be a lot of questions, might be none. They may just walk in and say, "Oh yeah, this is great and let's move on," so. on. So I just don't want to piggyback.
For was it the windows? You were here for?
I was here for that. We did it like nine or 10 o'clock in the morning, but early afternoon or something. But we should do it, I think, during regular, normal, what I would consider business hours for when guys are working. That just sometimes works out.
And like a 9:00 AM, Joe, someday?
Yeah, so we're the 23rd. I think we should try to get this going.
9:00 AM on the 6th. Is that enough time to get this thing out?
That gives, yeah, that should be plenty of time. That's two weeks, right? Yeah.
9:00 AM on Tuesday, the 6th, working for the board? Same visit is.
And I did drop the ball on checking on the split face about doing the front of the countertop, but I will try to remember tomorrow when I go. I've been there nine times since we talked last, but.
Proposals are due in the office by, well, month that will be September 6th, right?
Uh.
Look at that Friday.
It's Friday.
Yeah, it's the site visits the 6th and 30 days is usually the norm.
By noon, Friday, September 6th. That's a that's a Friday, Friday, September 6th.
And do we have a board meeting that following Tuesday?
I haven't looked that far. Select board meetings will be the 3rd and 17th of September and the 1st of October. So that would work out, right?
Well.
What were you going to say? If you go the 20, Friday, the 27th? Is that what you were saying, Josh, of September?
No, I'm well, I'm thinking if we did August, do by August, August 30th, if you did by August 30th, we could open them on the September 3rd select board meeting.
That's pretty fast. It's only 24 days, but they should be. I would, or we could have them do the 6th of or do the 13th, gives them a little more time in September and open them on the 17th. Try to crowd it. I'd give them more time rather than less time.
Is the board in agreement to do, what's the 13th, Mary?
That's a Friday, 13th.
Friday, the 13th, September 13th.
Friday, September 13th at 12:00 noon to Bill. Okay, proposed will be opened at the select board meeting on, what did we say, September 17th?
Yep.
At 6:00 PM. Okay. That's done. Bill and you'll clean this off? Thanks. Kirsten, what else you got for us?
The only other thing I have is that I'll be out of the office a little bit tomorrow afternoon. I've got election training. We're gearing up for the presidential elections next year. So that's everything.
All right. Thanks, Kirsten. So we've handled everything in the packet except one and two. Mike Rowe, Town Rec Director.
Very good.
Great.
You weren't here. I, when I got here, there were three of you. I only had so many bags I could carry.
I have a whole bag here, Mary. Mary.
I'm surprised he pushed it over. He wasn't going to do that. Couple of updates. Things going well at the pool. When the weather's nice, we're busy. When it's not, we're not. We only had two days so far where we had to close. Other than that, we've been steady as we always are. I'm happy to report that Dewey Field is done. So you'll probably have the bill next time if you get a chance to go over. They painted that on Friday and Saturday. Don't ask me why they did it on Friday and Saturday, but I went over on both days and I wouldn't want to have painted it on Friday or Saturday, but they chose to. They don't have much choice. So they got it done. It looks beautiful. Please go over and take a look at it. They did a wonderful job on it.
Billy, can we get some photos of it for the website and Facebook?
The, what else do I have? I mean, soccer and flag football signups have started. Yes, I'm going to say it falls approaching very quickly. So they can either come by the town hall and pick out a form. They can download it off the website, or they can stop by the pool and fill out their form for our K through six soccer program and flag football.
The flag football program, correct me if I'm wrong, isn't it's not our program?
We sponsor a five, six team. The other, if you're in grades three, four, you would sign up through the city. That makes sense.
Gotcha. Mike also gave us his capital improvement plan from 2014. And Mike, did you want to walk through this briefly?
I can. It was just more like, I don't know, steamrolled. I was just passing off stuff that had done. And of course, I gave myself a black and white copy. No, I don't have it. So it's color copied. You know, Byron put me onto this when I first went on and I thank him for his guidance. And so I basically just set out some things that I felt that needed to be done recreation wise for the first five years. Everything that was that is printed there was done in the beginning. Everything in red has been done. Blue is in progress. And then black is still has yet to be done. And there's not much black. There's a lot of red, which has been done for your from your support over the years. We appreciate that. That's how we're able to get a lot of things done was how you supported the rec program. So I also sent out to my committee members the updated one from 2020 to 2024 that they can start to add things that we want to see done in the next five years. So we can talk about that going forward in committee meetings and adding to that capital plan. So if you have any questions on what has been done, everything that I put down in the beginning is there. And like I said, most of that has been accomplished through efforts of many, many different people. So.
Comments on this for Mike?
Good job.
Sorry, did I not put one in your back end?
Lot of work that.
Grabbed the wrong pad.
We used to do it.
Well, I got to tell you, I read through this again and again. Color coding, it's awesome. And all the work you've put in the five years with all your help and your teams.
Yep.
This this five year plan should be the benchmark, in my opinion, for all department heads to to model model after. So Byron does a great job. And Chris, you're just getting into it. And Chief and Teddy do a nice job. But man, this thing is awesome. So great job.
So other than that, I don't, I did send an equipment inventory list. Bill has that on file. So does Kirsten, if you want to look at it, what we have. I update it every year this time of the year, what we have in our inventory for supplies. So you're more than welcome to look at that. Other than that, I don't have much. We have a bunch of things going on. We're getting the disc golf courses moving along pretty rapidly with the help of Byron and Jason from the highway. We've been able to knock out a bunch of paths for smooth out the path for the disc golf course. The trail is complete. The loop is complete. So we encourage people to go walk on that. But as we go further, we'll have trail headings and markers and all that stuff. That's still to come. But the actual loop is done and hopefully by fall, we'll have the disc golf course in place. And we'll just keep plugging along at making that part of the park better and better. So.
Good job, Mike.
Anybody has any questions?
I was approached by some folks, well, do we have anything in place about like if a group of town people want to go have a pickup game, a softball or football or play up there? Do we allow that?
We have a field, we have a field usage that you approved two years ago.
That, that, yeah, I just years ago, yeah, years ago, a group of us used to get together every Sunday and go over to TNT field and play softball. There was like eight or 10 of us.
My sister Donna.
Huh? That was a while ago. I know.
Forty years ago.
No, it was less than that. It was pretty old still.
Trying to think of where TNT Park was.
On Route 3 in Proctor.
Before his time.
My sister.
Pittsburgh. Anyway, yes.
Donna used to go.
Yeah, Don and Dick. And anyway, we used to play. And I didn't know if the town has any policy, you know, that we allow people in the town to use the field because there's that field up there that nobody uses that they started and you had some reference to that. And I didn't, you know, right by where you go into the landfill, that field down on the lower level that there's nothing done. And one field is used, one portion. And then there's another section that was started and never finished.
That's all school.
Huh?
That's school property.
School property, yeah.
We don't really have anything to do with it.
But I didn't know if we had any policy if a bunch of adults or kids wanted to go play on a Sunday afternoon, do we allow that or not?
Absolutely. Just clean up after yourself.
Let's go.
We would not, we would prohibit it.
I mean, because, yeah, I understand that. So so what I'm getting at and.
So all they would do is notify you that they'd be up there.
People will call me and say, can I use this for this, you know, like someone's like, we have a birthday party over at Dewey Field. Can we, you know, play around? I'm like, yeah, of course you can, you know, just remove your trash. But if it gets more organized, like if your softball league decided to become a little bit more serious, well, then we have a conversation about a usage fee.
Yeah, this was just a bunch of.
And what have you. But no, it's a public park. You would go in just like any other public park and treat it the way you would is what we would hope and enjoy it. And if you wanted something more specific.
Policy.
Yeah, as long as they know there's no alcohol.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can't bring any cases of beer to drink.
You can't smoke in the park at all. Vaping, but we discourage that at the pool just for the sight of it and for kids. They don't, you know.
Oh.
You know, because vaping is technically not hurting anybody but the person.
We just, you said we discourage it or do we?
Discourage it.
Do we not allow?
So if somebody comes, if somebody were to start vaping in the pool area, I will go up to them and say, please, out of respect for the children, would you please just go to your car if you want to do that? So it doesn't happen very often. And it hasn't happened in a while. But it will become more commonplace as people switch. But we do not allow smoking and we do that probably once or twice a week. Somebody would be in the parking lot lighting it up. And we'll go out and tell them that there's no smoking in the park and they're unaware of it, even though it clearly states it on the front as you drive in.
Reading's off, Tim.
Right, exactly. So that answer.
Anything else for Mike? Good, Joe?
Good, thanks.
Thanks for everything, Mike.
Thank you.
Byron Hathaway, Town Road Commissioner. Are you by?
Good evening.
Good evening. Put number one in your packets, please.
Highway Committee Minutes.
Thank you. There you go, Joe. Number one in your packet is Grudges and Roads Standards to be discussed. Byron, this is the one that you said needed to, we had to circle some questions, right?
Yeah, on the front. I, you know, I did one, those things that I recommend anyways. There's a couple of things there if you want to include them. The biggest impact that these codes and standards have coming with there is some type of a major disaster and there's FEMA help. If you have codes and standards, FEMA will help you. Even if it was substandard before the event, they will help you bring it to current your current codes and standards.
What did you just hand me? Your wish list?
That's not a wish list. That's that's a part of the document that we actually have to circle.
Yes.
But you know, I circled what I felt we needed at a minimum.
Okay.
We needed to circle. There's a couple of other ones there that you either answer yes or no on whether you want to include them or not.
And what are your recommendations on those?
I didn't really care. I guess it has to do, one is intermittent stream crossings. I don't really think we need to meet state hydrology for intermittent stream.
Okay.
So you're going to be the answer to the test here, by?
The answer for that. You could circle no if you wanted to, but if you if you feel you want culverts brought up to this, to hydraulic standards, current AV trans hydraulic standards, then circle yes.
Well, what are your recommendations on that?
On intermittent streams, I don't think it's a huge deal.
All right. So we would say no to that.
Because typically on an intermittent stream, there's no water there except for, you know, springtime runoff or.
So we would say no to that?
I would say no.
Okay. I don't know if Josh is listening.
No, I didn't.
You don't throw the way you do.
Number five is roadway construction standards.
Back to number one. Sorry, we started topping number one.
Yeah.
Section one municipal road standards.
That's required.
So that's a yes?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
It says required.
Yeah. And then required.
I also checked off yes on the non hydrologically connected road segments.
Okay.
All right, I'm circling that one. How about section two, class four road standards?
That's a yes.
That's required.
How about the?
And the non hydrologically connected road standards. We're meeting all those standards for those areas also. So I just I just circled yes.
Okay. So yes and yes. How about section three, please?
Section three is also required.
Yes.
So you need to circle yes.
Section four?
Intermittent stream crossings. JP and I had a little discussion and I don't think it's necessary.
So that's a no?
It's a no.
How many do we have that you provide crossings for?
Intermittent stream crossings?
Yeah.
There's one up there by Donardo's runs across underneath Grove Street. That's an intermittent stream crossing. No, we haven't had any issues with intermittent stream crossings. I mean, I don't see why. I mean, we'd have to upgrade that to, you know, three foot culvert for.
No.
The occasional time when the ditch plugs.
To meet hydraulic, right, but you've got the ability to let water pond back up and then drain out. So I mean, I don't know. I didn't think it was necessary. Roadway construction standards, we currently reference A, the A 76 V trans standard. So we do have those. And so I would say yes, I guess, for that.
Number six?
And the guardrail standard. We have a few areas where we don't meet the state's guardrail standard, but guardrails, the only place that's where we're going to help you if you if you say we had a major event and it took out that new culvert we just put in down there at Stratton Road, for instance. There's some guardrail there and it, you know, and if it took out that guardrail, then, you know, the guardrail would get placed back if you had guardrail standards. So I would say it's not going to hurt to say yes. It doesn't mean that you're forced to upgrade stuff now, you know. And then the last one, driveway access, we have that standard, yes.
Okay. Is there a motion by the board to approve this?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mary, second by Joe for discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thanks, Byron.
I will need one copy of that. We need to keep, I'd like to have a copy from my file. Bill will have a copy in his file and I will send an electronic copy of that to V Trans.
Okay. That takes care of all your packet items, folks. And it takes care of all of we've taken care of all new and old agenda items as well.
Yeah.
There is a.
The only other agenda item would be the trailer bids.
Oh, we have a highway committee meeting.
There you go. I knew there was a signature page somewhere.
Do you want to give us the update on the highway committee meeting, Mary?
Sure. We had a highway committee meeting at Seward Road. Landowner to the north, the graphic edge, wanted the town to assume responsibility for ditching on graphic edge property and on some property within the town's right of way, not only on the north side where graphic edge is, but the south side where Foley Properties is. This is a very built up area. There's a lot of buildings and there's a lot of parking lots. So there's a lot of runoff. Our culvert underneath Seward Road appears to be working fine. Joe got down at daylight. He can see both ends. The problem seems to be the water that runs that we have nothing to do with that runs under our road from the south to the north. I believe our finishing recommendation was that there is a small area on the south side of Seward Road near the two Foley properties, two Foley driveways where Byron can do some ditching on it within our right of way to improve some of the swell water runoff storage area right there. But beyond that, we can take a wait and see attitude and see if that helps with the problem. We were asked frankly to install a new culvert. We were asked to re ditch a 540 foot long ditch and we, I believe we refused to do those things. And I think we recommended that we not do them, but there are other people who.
I think our recommendation to them, Mary, was that the stuff outside the right of way is their responsibility and they need to maintain where that water goes.
Right. And if they have a problem with their neighbor, they also wanted the town to write a letter to the Foleys indicating the problem. And from I kept, I asked the guy twice and it appears that they never communicated by letter to formally request this problem of be addressed by the Foley. So I think that's the first step. The two neighbors need to address it themselves.
And I think, you know, one of the things that we talked about was that culvert that crosses Seward Road, the part that's in the right of way, I would believe is our responsibility to make sure it's open. The problem is the debris comes off from the Foley property that that plugged it. And we did a lot of discussion about Act 250 for the Metro Mail property and this and that and the other. But nowhere did we ever talk about what what would have been more business forms originally, what requirements they may have on them to manage that water. And I don't know if there are any. And I don't know if there are any or whatever. I mean, it's there, what would you say Byron, acre? At least a pavement or more? That, that big area or two? Yeah.
Oh, good Lord, yeah.
It's kind of.
Probably an acre and a half to two acres.
Of pavement there that's collecting all this water and putting it into a fifteen inch culvert, which I think might be undersized, but that's neither here nor there. But are there any requirements on them? And I think that that's something that either the two landowners got to work out because maybe somewhere it says that that water can drain across the road into that area that was Metro Mail's, but somebody else has got to maintain the ditch. I don't know, but there's got to be some history.
Um, I did pull the permit.
Yeah.
Um, for that two fifty permit for the graphic edge. Um, I went down and to Bill Burke's office and actually got, um, and got portions of the permit application. Uh, there, I guess he's their, probably their building manager or whatever, um, Mark, um, Pugini?
In the minutes.
Whatever. Anyways, uh, he keeps saying that they have and they are currently discharging stormwater to our sanitary sewer system. And he kept maintaining that that was permitted in the act two fifty permit. Well, it's not really clear in the act two fifty permit that, that they are, that they, they're allowed to discharge fifty percent to the city's storm system. Well, that's not the city's storm system down there. That's Rotten Town's sanitary sewer system. And I would think being good stewards of our sanitary sewer system, um, we should ask them to, to remove their pipe from our sanitary sewer system and discharge that water directly to their stormwater ditch on the east side of their building. See, the issue there is, is these, is the, uh, uh, loading dock that was permitted by act two fifty. It was a six thousand or sixty-two hundred square foot addition that was done in two thousand?
Yeah, it's on my phone.
Something like that. And that, uh, you know, is below grade. So it is a water collector. I mean, there's no way around it. And yet they're.
You don't dig a hole in Vermont.
System there that pumps that water. Well, it's, uh, last winter with that severe storm event we had in January and that amount of water, it, you know, couldn't handle it. And they were scrambling around trying to get that pumped out before it froze that night and that sort of thing. So this, that's what prompted their whole issue here. And they seem to think that it's a town issue because under that particular event, there was some water that jumped the road from the south side, the Foley side, over to their side. And now he's maintaining that it jumps the road every time they have a storm event. Well, that's, I don't think that's the case. I think those, that, uh, that winter event that we had is, is, is those one and ten year events we get. And, uh, you know, it is what it is. I, I don't think we have a whole lot of responsibility there. I mean, it was going to cost us fifteen to eighteen thousand dollars to extend the culvert and a couple of catch basins up the south side, um, to more effectively pick up storm water. But that didn't take into consideration the amount of ledgework that may have to be done there in order to maintain pitch on the pipe. So it could be significantly more than fifteen to eighteen thousand dollars to extend that and I don't think it's necessary. I think we can cut the shoulders and do a little bit of ditching there and take care of what's on the south side. Like we did for Mr. Alderman, um, when he built this new Toyota dealership down there, he had an issue with water jumping the road. And we reestablished a ditch on the south side there and he hasn't had any issues since then.
And if they do their ditching on their property.
Yeah.
That water coming off of Foley's parking lot should go to the back and around. And they, I mean, I think they should have been made, or it should have been part of that act two fifty, that a drain be put into that loading dock.
Well.
And they, that, that should have been part, that should have been drained.
He claims that the drain is and that they're allowed by that permit to pump to our.
Right, but I think it should have been a.
System, but it doesn't say Rotten Town's sanitary sewer system. It says Rotten City's storm system.
Right.
And I, so I don't know if it's, you know, if.
They shouldn't be pumping it, yeah.
If they get too ugly about this sort of thing, then, you know, maybe we need to reopen that two fifty permit and take a look at things here. But I don't think it's, uh, out of, I don't think it's, it's out of bounds at all to ask them to remove their discharge, uh, to the sanitary system. They, when they got a, when they've got a stormwater ditch available to them to discharge to.
They prefer to pump the water versus let it run on gravity, which makes no sense to me. But that's me.
I don't know if you can get it to run gravity or not.
Well, it would have to go through the parking lot into that corner where that other problem exists.
Yeah. So I don't know what the board's decision is here, uh, or if you guys want to mull it over for another two weeks before you make a decision or whatever, but, um, probably we should.
You mean on the, the storm waters sewer separation?
On the stormwater part of it, on, on Seward Road, we should, you know, at least get back to Mark and let him know that this is what we're going to do and that's the extent of what we're going to do. Or, yeah, we're going to throw lots of money your way and this is what we're going to do or.
Well.
However, you guys want to handle it.
I think our recommend was you were just going to work on the south side. I haven't touched, I, I mean, I didn't do anything with the stormwater sewer separation because we don't, I don't think we have enough information on that part yet.
Okay.
I mean, I think we probably, yeah, I don't know. I'm not sure what to do about that.
Well, we don't have to make a decision tonight, right?
Not on that part, but to get back to Mark on this, no, we're not going to, we're not going to do a whole bunch of ditching and.
We'll follow your recommendations.
Okay. Then I will just call them back and let them know that we're going to.
Do the ditching like we said and.
Yeah.
On the south side and.
South side.
Make sure the culvert's open and the cross culvert from Foley's across is open and.
And if they don't ditch that area from that cross culvert to where it drains in back of their building, it goes behind the solar panels there, JP, if you've been down there and goes into that.
Solar panels.
Huh?
It goes in front of them.
Well, behind and front, it goes on the east side, right? Or not?
Goes across the south side of the solar panels.
And then, and then over toward the railroad tracks.
To the railroad track.
And then back around the building. It actually, that water actually goes around the building and then between.
Goes between them and webs.
Webs, um.
And then back underneath a large diameter culvert underneath.
Right. And, and that was another issue that came up.
Parking lot all the way down to Route seven, across seven and ends up down at Michael's.
And, and that might, that culvert needs to be some maintenance to it. There's like a, what is it, three foot? I think.
I believe it's a thirty-six.
Six inch culvert that goes between the car wash, Alderman's Toyota car wash and where webs is and it runs down there between the, and it goes under Route seven. And I don't know whose that is and who should maintain it. But the entranceway is of that is all go overgrown. Some of it's collapsed. Um, it's not us, but, but I don't know if that's something that maybe in your, Billy could find out. It's been there forever, for as long, for as long as I remember, but nobody maintains it. And we should find out whose responsibility, whether it's Vtrans or.
One underneath the old, uh, drive-in theater.
The, the old drive-in theater. So.
Yeah, that culvert's been there that long.
Do you want to say anything about, uh, Grover Drive situation?
Might as well handle that too.
Might as well handle that too, because we should get back to Mr. Regosta on that.
Yeah. So you had correspondence with, um, Bronson Spencer?
Yes, um, I did meet up there with, uh, with Mr. Spencer. Um, his take on the whole thing essentially is, um, he didn't agree with putting, I had suggested putting in a fifteen inch culvert, probably three hundred feet of it. Um, his take on that was the same as what mine was that I never mentioned to you was, if he started, if we put that culvert in, it's going to take care of it. Except for during the winter months, if he's continually pumping water into that, that constant trickle on the, on the west end of that is going to eventually fill and freeze the ditch on that side, which will then allow it to run out into the road and create a problem.
I thought we weren't going to do that though, for that reason.
So no, yeah, no, I don't, uh, I don't, I don't think we need to do that. And the town shouldn't be doing that. I mean, it's not our issue or problem. So there were two things that Bronson came to conclusion of. One, to restore the area that he had dug out. He, he suggested just dig it out and, uh, another foot or eighteen inches, put some good clean river stone back in there, put fabric over it and then cover it back up with, uh, the, the onsite dirt that was taken out. He thought that would take care of that. But as far as some pump water is concerned, he recommended a directional bore and that he put in a, you know, at least a two or three inch pipe and go down the side of the road and then turning and make sure that pipe exits in the pond. So that again, it doesn't discharge in the ditch where it's going to freeze up.
There was never a problem until they started pumping the sump.
Exactly. And it's like.
We don't have a problem, but.
He is the one that created the problem.
The soils are such there that he should have known that there was going to be an issue there, um, and not.
Well, what I heard from the neighbors is they told him and he still insisted on doing it.
Right. So what we've concluded is that the design, how that should be restored, that area, that stormwater, I guess that's a stormwater retention area for no better lack.
Exactly, that's what it was.
We could cover the cost of the design, but Mr. Regosta has to pay to have that restored to its original back according to that design. Because Bronson Spencer could draw something up for us and give it to him and say that, and he would be the one to check and make sure it's done properly. As far as his water that's pumped out of there, that's up to him. But he cannot discharge it into that area any longer.
Right.
And, and if he does.
It's running into other people's.
Well, it runs into that area and it, it creates more water than was supposed to be there and it runs over the road. And a big storm event's going to bother because you got twice, you know, additional water. So, but the cost of restoring that should be borne by Mr. Regosta.
Bronson said he would be glad to draw something up if this board so desired that they wanted him to draw something up.
Right. Because we should have something in place that he can follow. This is the way it's got to be done and somebody to make sure it's done that way. And, and I think that's the way to go. I'd move we have Bronson write something up. Yep.
Motion by John Pauls, their second?
Second.
By Mary for discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And then I, do we need, we need to send Mr. Regosta a letter explaining what we've. Thought we already sent him a letter telling him we wanted him to fix it. I don't think, I don't know if we did. No. Billy, didn't we?
He did.
Yeah. Yeah. So we'll follow up with the plans and. This is the plan to fix it and it's, and the cost is on him. And as far as, you know, his groundwater, he's going to have to hire somebody to do the directional boring. Probably will that be in the right of way, more than likely.
Yeah, I'd be glad to permit that, to have him do it in the right of way. And then there's only one landowner at that point he's got to deal with, other than he needs to make sure that JR is on board with that. He does need to deal with JR.
Yeah.
Because that pipe needs to turn and go out to the pond.
Has to go to the pond and drain in the pond.
Okay.
We don't want that trickle running down the side of the road.
Right.
Because that'll trickle down there and then when it gets to the flat spot on the bottom, yep, it's got to go in the pond. So.
Hey.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let's get, um, we got the trailer quotes.
We got the trailer quotes.
Sorry, Joe, go ahead.
Well, I just don't know if we need to put a timeframe on this because this could drag on for years.
Right.
I think this should be accomplished before cold weather. All right. When we get the Spencer design, we can decide on a time limit.
Okay.
And we're paying the engineer?
Yeah, I guess we are.
I don't think they'll charge you too much for that.
So that's our, that's our share. We're, we're covering the cost of the engineer.
For somebody else inconveniencing us.
Right.
I got to figure out how to do this.
All right, we got, uh, four trailer bids. Mary, you want to write these down?
I can do that.
Cost to submit a bid?
Yeah.
Did they?
Okay.
First one is from Lucky's.
Nope. No. Well, Kaufman emailed theirs, so I know what it is.
Um, I'll give these to Byron to review to make sure they're what he wants, but it says, uh, total price delivered thirteen thousand twenty-seven dollars.
Hello?
Next one just says trailer quote, so we'll see who this is from.
They don't want you to.
Kaufman, K-A-U-F-M-A-N.
Where are they from? Lucky's is out of North Carolina.
Lexington, Lexington, North Carolina.
Okay.
Six thousand, six hundred, sixty-four dollars and twenty cents.
Is that a delivered price? Because I, does it say or is that a?
That's delivered. That's delivered price.
Okay.
That would have to be done as two checks though, one for the trucking and one for the trailer.
Is that the company that you had mentioned in North Carolina?
Yeah.
That's where I bought my trailer from. Kaufman. Good trailer.
Yeah.
Would you like that, son?
They ship three hundred trailers a week.
Yeah?
This is Earl's Truck Repair. Nine thousand, five hundred and twelve dollars. And the fourth one is from G Stone Commercial.
It's Middlebury, right?
Correct.
They have a brand?
Uh, looks like, uh, ten thousand, nine seventy-four.
You want to review these before, before we go? Are you ready to?
I don't need to.
So I'd, uh, I'd move we accept the Kaufman bid.
Second.
Motion by John Pauls, second by Sharon to submit, or to, uh, accept the Kaufman, uh, bid in the amount of what, Mary?
Uh, six thousand, six hundred, sixty-four dollars and twenty cents delivered.
That's the one you had, you had talked to us earlier, but, yeah.
Will you authorize the, uh, town treasurer to issue a, uh, check for the freight?
That's included in my motion.
That is.
Two separate checks.
Two separate checks.
Two separate checks.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
All right. And I'll get the vote election in North Carolina.
What else, Byron?
Um, just, uh, some information stuff, roadside mowing. We got the tractor back. That's starting again. Uh, we got a man in the tractor. It'll be there every day until we're done. Um, probably be slightly more than two weeks because we're doing a thorough mowing, pushing everything back.
Get rid of as much of that yellow stuff as you can.
Oh, God, yeah.
Oh, God.
A lot of mine.
Yeah. Uh, we're going to talk about that come budget time.
Okay.
Uh.
My lawn or, oh, no.
Oh, yeah, your lawn. We're going down to fix you.
Oh, perhaps so.
Um, we have almost completely completed, uh, a little renovation to the ball field, uh, behind the school.
Okay, yeah.
For micro and the school, we will be, um, we will be billing them for that, um, time. Um, do we have any update on the signage for Holiday Drive? We kind of battered back and forth here, some, some ideas. Ed, you said you were going to check on something else?
I did. I forgot, I got busy and I forgot about what. But I will.
Okay. And then, uh, just for your information, um, this is my iPad and I will pass this around to you on my iPad. Um, I have an, an app called Fulcrum, which is a database. It allows you to build databases of any sort. What you're seeing there is a map of the town of Rotten, um, with pins and each one of those pins has a different color. And those pins represent either a single or a cluster of ash trees all around the town. So I've done an inventory of our ash trees. We have a total of eighty-eight records. Those records represent two hundred and eighty-six trees. A hundred and three of those, uh, need, are either removal or suspect trees. Um, thirty-seven of them need to be removed. There are sixty-six that are suspect. And of the thirty-seven that need to be removed, twenty-seven of those, um, will have to be done by a professional tree company , um, because of lawyers and that sort of thing. Um, the, the other ones, uh, we will reassess, but probably we, the highway department can take those down this fall.
Those twenty-something that need to be done by a professional tree company?
Twenty-seven.
Is that something they can wait till next budget season? We can budget for it?
Uh, yeah, I probably will draft up some specifications and put that out to bid because that will be definitely more than five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
All right. I'm thinking it might even have to be a, you know, might be a separate line item or something.
It could be. Right.
Those are our ash trees.
But those are trees that do need to be removed.
So, but the wood's good because the Emerald Ash Borer is not here, so we could still use it for firewood.
It can be used for firewood anyways.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Or it can be moved within, if you, you can move it around within your designated area.
Okay. Which is the town or within?
Yeah, I mean, we don't, you know, like I say, we aren't a designated EAB area yet. So, um, yeah, it can be used as firewood.
Okay.
Chipped. Um, any type of, destroy the wood. So that was just some information that I wanted to pass on, but that, that's a handy little app. It costs us about a hundred and thirty dollars a year where we can have as many different databases on there as you want. You download the database to your own computer. Um, so you capture the data, um, on an Excel spreadsheet, which allows you to sort it. That's how I came up with these numbers. I was able to sort that on, on Excel. Um, it's kind of handy to have. I will be doing the manhole inventory using the same thing.
Yes, yeah.
And that's already on there. I have, um, currently, I think I have, uh, I have, um, currently, I think I have, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, nine databases on there, um, from signs and asphalt to sidewalks, manholes, and so forth. So, I just, thought I'd just show that to you for interest.
Chief had a question.
Chief?
Do you put fire hydrants on that thing?
We can do anything you want on that. I mean, if you want to, if you want to establish a database, there you go, I'll let you have the, you can run around town and capture them. What it does is, is I can show you, there'd be a map of the town there, and when you come to a hydrant, you stand physically at the hydrant, add the data, and it captures that location and puts the pin on the, on the, on the map.
Great.
Yep. It's a handy little-
Thanks for switching out the chalk to the, the dry erase board.
Noticed.
I love it.
We were testing you to see if you noticed.
I noticed it right away.
All right, well, I guess since I didn't, I don't have much to complain about, do I?
The old chalkboard is up at the Highway Department, should it need to be brought back, it can be at any, at a moment's notice.
Have you been, um, differentiating your time for the increase in pay when you do water sewer stuff?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Make sure you do that.
We haven't had a lot of water, but I, when I started doing the manhole survey, that's going to take four, five days. Um, we walked the railroad tracks the other day, all I could find were two manholes, so I've got to get some more data, probably from the city.
You walked the train tracks?
Yeah.
That's because the rest of them are covered.
Either with zero, either with zero tracks or-
Last time we found them, they were out in the brush, and right now, that, we may have to wait till October when the vegetation's down.
And that's a few months.
If I can get some measurements, the last time we measured from, uh, from Windcrest Road, we measured, physically measured segments down through there to find those manholes.
You know, one of the things, we talked a little bit water and sewer, but we really, I feel, we should have somebody take a look at that manhole that is under the tracks, the one that we can't see. You could run a camera from the one on the west side across, just to see if anything has fallen down, if there's anything in there. I really think that we-
Don't think they use that section? I think they're a little leery of it, so I don't think they park stuff in there.
No, but they're going over it every time, in and out, the one on Quality Lane, that, that-
Or are they just backing, are they going down by Windcrest Road and backing stuff up to it?
If they're doing that, it's changed since, since, uh, because when we were-
Because I haven't physically seen it, there were some cars parked the other day, but they were, so I don't know if they came in.
And, and they, and they may very well be doing what you're saying, but I just think we should get some kind of an idea of the condition of that. You've seen it two years ago.
Yeah.
I think when it started, we dug, pulled the tie out and looked, but, I mean, that's just something that if, if you look in there and there's a bunch of bricks and a bunch of debris down in there, you know this is an imminent collapse.
Right.
And there's going to be major problems, so I don't know.
How do you get to do that?
Does A-1 do that?
Anyone could run a camera through that.
Yeah. I mean, I just think that that's something, and this might speed things along, especially if we see some-
It's not a bad idea to ask them what it costs us, at least, Fire. Get a price.
Because you know, those are the only one I know, is that one in there.
Yeah, we could, you could camera it from two directions.
Right, because you can come from the other way, um-
Come from Quality Lane down, or we can come, yeah, come across the tracks.
Yeah.
Because without removing the tie, you can't get to the-
You can't see it.
Can't get to the cover.
Yep. Thank you, Fire.
You're good.
Thanks, Mike.
Uh, Chief Clark, Fire Department.
You pass that down to the chief, please?
How are you tonight, Chief?
Good, how are you?
Our assistant chiefs?
Wonderful.
How are you doing?
I'm all right.
All right.
I don't have much for you tonight.
All right.
Um, we've been pretty busy over the last couple of weeks. Had a pretty bad car accident by Galipos the other day. Um, did a good job getting him out. Um, I do have a new application for you guys to sign, we met this guy, and we think he's going to work out.
Good.
So, he's our, uh, I believe our tenth city slot, so we're closed for now.
He passed background?
He did, yes.
Attendance has been good, Chief?
What's that?
Attendance has been good? Membership attendance?
It has, it has.
Great.
You know, daytime's a little tough, but it's been pretty good, actually, so.
Good.
Um-
Who did the background?
You did.
Yeah, no. Are you sure?
I, yeah, you have all the numbers written on his, the one I photocopied for you.
Okay.
It's the original that I put in their file.
Gotcha, all right, that's what I recognized.
That literally just made my night, by the way.
Yeah.
That was awesome.
They were just wearing JP.
We going to vote on this, Fire? We just got to sign it.
So, do, do we use names? I think we do.
Sure.
Yeah.
Uh, is it George, or?
It's George, yes.
George, uh, George Schmata?
Yep.
I move his approval, as a member of Rutland Town Fire Department.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
She is beautiful.
I voted aye, except I forgot to.
What else, the Air Force Chief?
Uh, I had a little issue with our Engine Three pump the other day.
You, uh, listening to that, Joe?
Yeah.
And Sharon? Chris just said Engine Three's pump had a problem.
Oh, yeah.
We got it fixed, though. Had a bit of a hole in one of the things.
That particular pump has been, it's a, it's a different style pump, that hail pump.
It's, it's coming to its end of life, I think, in the next couple of years, so.
It's only got to be here three more.
Yep. I think it'll make it.
It'll make it.
Um, we had our first kickoff meeting tonight for the, uh, Building Committee. Just had a couple ideas, and thank you. Trying to set a schedule for the next meeting, thinking sometime in August, we haven't come up with a date yet. But, uh, whoever can come would be appreciated to be there. And I do have a quick executive session item, if we have time at the end.
Just we do.
It'll be quick.
Yep.
I haven't-
Okay, thanks.
Yep, I haven't heard anything back from Mark Chrisell. I'm pretty sure he's been there, but he's supposed to be getting us a survey on the lot, and then we can go talk to Mrs. Baird.
Okay.
Try to find where the pins are and stuff. And I wanted to acknowledge the guys for the job they did last Thursday. They were there for a long time, just right next to the house, we were in the middle of a bridal shower, I couldn't go. But anyway, uh-
The truck accident?
The truck accident up on North Grove Street. Um, Mike and, I think he was the guy in charge there, but they did a super job up there.
For a long time on a very hot day.
You were on the Jaws, right, Dell?
Yeah.
About forty-five minutes of-
He's an escape artist from way back.
That's one of the worst ones I think we've had in quite some time, extensive education. We need to get that from Pittsburgh.
We'll, we'll certainly, certainly keep that gentleman in our prayers and-
Yep.
Excellent job to-
Job well done.
Men and women of our department, so thankful you're there. Um, and then, uh, Bill will get us some minutes, uh, over the next couple of weeks for the Fire Committee meeting, Building Committee meeting. And, uh, yep, appreciate everyone who could attend that, we had representation from police as well. And, uh, we're also looking sometime in August to set up a site visit, to go visit the Castleton, uh, Police Department to take a peek at, because they recently just, um, built a new station, we want to take a look and see what they did and get some creative ideas from them, so, um, the chief is going to figure out some times and dates, we can go in August and, and, uh, visit with the folks from Castleton. So, and we'll have that short Personnel Committee, uh, Personnel Executive Session in a moment, all right, Chris?
Sounds good.
Anything for the chief? All right, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Ed Dumas, Town Police Chief. You any health officer stuff tonight, John?
Just real quick.
How are you, Chief?
Good.
Good.
So, Call of Services, it's, uh, we had forty-six. I would like to mention, uh, here the other night, I know that Officer Riley had a ten fifty, I think, I can't remember where it was, the head on, the Fire Department was there, he complimented him on how well they directed traffic, took care of all the problems, well, he just did his job, it was-
A ten fifty, for those who don't know, was a car accident.
That's an accident, I'm sorry. I just wanted to thank the Fire Department on that.
Great.
Did a great job. And we did have a, one issue that we've been having right along, I guess, on, with the Diamond Run Mall. Uh, they had a, uh, an issue with, uh, a call within the mall. Uh, two businesses are apparently not getting along, so there's a call made to the city police, who referred them to the sheriffs, who referred them to us. And then, uh, from there, we tried to, you know, work, to figure out what was going on, it wasn't a critical incident or anything of that nature, but basically, we were told that, no, they're not going to, the sheriffs aren't going up there to handle the problems, even though they have a contract with the mall to do it. The mall's their take on it, it's not, it's not, it's not our problem, so give the town police. Well, it was their problem, having, with the two businesses within, within their mall, therefore it is their problem. They do contract with the sheriffs, but they do not want to call the sheriffs out and have to pay for them. That's the issue we're having with them.
So, they, it's also an Act 250 permit condition?
Correct.
Yeah.
Right.
That the sheriff provides coverage?
Right.
Not us.
Correct.
Well, it says a sheriff specifically, it says law, there, as per law enforcement. Because they had security for a long time.
Yeah.
It's a sheriff, isn't it?
Yeah, he does it, he has the contract.
They have the contract, but I don't think the Act 250 specifically says the Sheriff's Department. It just says they have to have law enforcement. I don't, I've never seen the actual permit, but I'm-
Well, they have to contract with law enforcement, is what it requires, so I suggest we send them a bill for whatever thing we did, and add thirty-three and a third percent onto the bill, and I guarantee you that if they have to pay us seventy-five dollars an hour, and they have to pay the sheriffs fifty dollars an hour, they'll call the sheriffs.
The, the problem will go away.
Right.
Good.
Or we'll get paid.
We're going to get paid.
Is that a motion?
I'd make that a motion.
I'll second that motion, yeah.
Joe can say it.
So, we'll send them a bill.
Yep. Add a third onto it.
Yep.
I'm partial to that fraction, for some reason, I'm not-
Well, are we sending, are we sending the bill to the actual mall, or are we sending it to the businesses?
Send it to the mall. They're the ones that have the contract, they're supposed to be providing law enforcement.
Right. But did they say that, they said they would not contact the Sheriff's Department on this issue?
Right. Because they, if they contact them, then they have to pay them.
Yeah.
So, we're supposed to be-
There, I think their point was, I'm getting the second hand from Deputy Washburn to me, so if I get it wrong, forgive me, but some of the fact that we're town residents too, so therefore we should be covering their problems down there.
They contracted away that.
Would the board member that made the motion, John, would you entertain, um, retracting your motion, giving myself and Bill two weeks to contact mall leadership to discuss this issue, before we send a bill?
Sure.
Give us a, give us a couple of weeks.
Sure.
Bill and I, over the last several months, have made some, we feel some pretty good connections at the corporate level, and, uh, before the bill gets sent, we'd like to, opportunity to discuss it first.
I'm good with that.
And if nothing happens, then we'll send them the bill.
Okay.
Appreciate that, John.
Yes, sir. The other thing is, I've noticed we have a speed cart out in the parking lot, arrived today around two-thirty. Uh, Deputy Washburn, self, got a quick lesson, I suspect he retained more than me, a lot of computer, pushing the numbers, trying to get the right programs to work, but we should get up and work and ask Byron to tow it up to town garage tonight, so it doesn't come up missing tomorrow.
Oh, good.
So-
Ask your grandchildren, they'll tell you how to operate.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I should learn that, too.
And I think our truck is scheduled, our cruiser, next cruiser truck, we're scheduled to come, uh, first of August, which is fairly soon.
That's exciting.
Yeah, it is. Yep. I think that's all I have at this point, John.
Then we'll be able to tow that thing all around with our truck.
Correct. Who's going to get him one like that, but he didn't?
Hmm?
I said, we could have got one like that, the same way he's worried ours is going to be, come up missing. I know where there's a couple.
Oh, boy.
Anything for the chief?
Thank you, sir.
All right, thanks, sir.
Thanks.
John Paul, Health Officer.
So, I just wanted to remind the board, I had not been charging mileage, um, last budget year, because we were in a tight fix, so I'll be charging mileage for my health officer duties. And the other thing I need, um, I'd ask approval for the board, when I'm doing patrol, um, I'd like nine fifty an hour for the, for the truck. Right now, the sheriff's contract charged twenty-eight dollars an hour for their vehicles, but I computed the cost, you, you, the, most of that'll get eaten up in fuel. It's just the nature of the beast, the truck is running for the full shift, you're accelerating hard, it's the wear and tear of the truck, but I could live with nine fifty for patrol reimbursement, that wouldn't be mileage, but stuff that I'm not patrolling and I'm not, um, running the truck hard, just the mileage would be fine.